So Eric is married, has three children, previously resided in Brandon, Mississippi. Officer Morris worked for the Jackson, Mississippi Police Department for 15 years. He worked in the patrol division burglary suppression unit and he has experience working as a field training officer and as an acting sergeant. He enjoys working out, reading, and working on older model vehicles. I can tell you so far, and gosh, how long have you been here so far?
Going on six months.
Going on six months, he's doing an incredibly good job. Absolutely one of the hardest working officers we've got in the department. So, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right.
Chief, does he miss the humidity?
What's that?
Does he miss the humidity?
No, I don't.
All right, next up Officer Frank Rios. Frank is married and he moved here, what, six, seven months ago?
October, chief. Last October.
Last October. How many months is that? About 10 months ago. Frank comes to us from New York PD. He was a police officer in New York. Prior to his law enforcement career, he was stationed at Joint Base Lewis McCord as an active duty service member in the United States Army. Now, he's soon to be promoted to staff sergeant. So...
He's not here.
No, he's not here. So we have another officer who's been around for a while that retired from the Army as just sergeant, which is great, but I told him pretty soon Frank's gonna be, have rank on him and he's gonna start telling him what to do. Currently Frank is serving in the Army Reserve as a drill sergeant, if you can believe it. I haven't seen him, he's gonna take some videos when he goes next time out, I wanna see him. He's such a nice guy, I can't see him being a drill sergeant, but we'll see. As I mentioned prior to joining the Des Moines Police Department, Officer Rios worked for New York PD and he was assigned to the 68th Precinct, whatever that means. But anyway, he worked in South Brooklyn, so in some tough area worked uniform patrol. He also enjoys working on vehicles, working out, and teaching others. Frank is also a very hardworking officer, engages with the community and is doing an incredible job. So welcome aboard Frank. Officer David Hamilton. So Officer Hamilton is married with two children. He was born and raised here in the Pacific Northwest. He attended Washington State University.
You're winning me every time here.
And has a bachelor's degree in business administration. After working in the corporate world, he opted for a change in profession and wanted to serve others. Officer Hamilton began his law enforcement career working for the Seattle Police Department. And shortly after graduating from the Police Academy, he lateraled to our department and we are extremely, extremely lucky to have David here. He enjoys spending time with his family, hiking, fishing, and hunting. And interestingly enough, just a quick story about Officer Hamilton. About last week or two weeks ago, I was out in the parking lot and his sergeant said, "Hey, do you know you're related to Hamilton?" And I said, "What? I don't know what you're talking about." So I have an aunt and uncle, Hamilton, Ken and Fay Hamilton. And sure enough, Uncle Ken's brother is Don, who is Dave's grandfather. So I mean, it's quite a ways out, but we're related somehow. So it was kind of an interesting story. So there's that little, I don't know what that would be, second or third or 10th cousin or nephew or whatever he is, but whatever he is, he's doing a great job and we're happy to have him aboard. So welcome aboard. Next up is Chase Ochart, Officer Chase Ochart. Now you may recognize the name or the last name. So Chase's father is newly promoted Sergeant Eddie Ochart from our department. So Chase is, went through the Police Academy and has been out on the street for, what, two months or so? About two months. And you may have remembered when I told the story about the person whose vehicle was stolen and the baby was inside and the new officer quickly used the cellphone to communicate with texting, that was Chase. That quickly, Chase, who's a quick thinker. Already, very early in his career, has used creativity and done an incredibly good job of actually saving a life in our community, no question about it. So we talked about his father. So because of his father being involved in law enforcement, that's what got him interested and got him to want to be a police officer. He joined the Explorers Program with the Puyallup Police Department when he was only 14 years old. And he graduated from Graham Capousen High School in 2018. Just a kid. While there, he was at the Running Start Program with Pierce College in Puyallup. He completed the academy on June 30th and is still in the Field Training Officer Program. So Chase, already through the examples, is doing an incredible job. So we're so happy to have him onboard and welcome. Okay, next up Officer Jeffrey Dodson. So Officer Dodson is, today I think is his first day on patrol. He just started about, what, two weeks ago or so? Yeah. So we're still trying to break him in a little bit. I worked on him for, what, half an hour this afternoon, trying to loosen him up a little bit. Eric tells me, "Be careful, because once you get him going, you'll never get him to stop talking." But so, so far, first day, he's doing good so far. He's been serving and protecting the citizens of Jackson, Mississippi for over nine years. And I will tell you, when Eric came and I said, "Hey, do you have any friends who, can you help bring some people out and get us some good officers?", he said, "I'll tell you, I got an officer that I'm working on to come out and he's the best one we got." And I don't know if I can really recommend many others, but the one we got coming is one of our best. And sure enough, we were lucky enough to get Jeff. So, welcome here Jeff. Jeff was first inspired to become a police officer after watching his community decline and over the years due to results of violence and drugs. He was just a child at the time and he vowed to become a police officer and reshape his community. His biggest inspiration was his father, who passed away two years ago. His father encouraged him to become the protector of the community and to be careful. Officer Dodson joined the Jackson Police Department where he made many arrests and received many awards for his public services to the community. He also worked with a task force and with the alcohol, tobacco, and firearms with resources to make the citizens of Jackson safer as he removed drugs and guns from the street. He's very excited to be out here in Des Moines and in our community and I can't tell you how extremely pleased I am to have him here and I'm waiting for him to loosen up just a little bit, but we're gonna get there. So welcome aboard.
Really quick, just don't tell them you're a Cowboys fan when you're out in the public, man.
I left that part out, because I didn't wanna...
I couldn't, I'm sorry. There's still hope for you, man.
I wonder if we can take a quick photograph?
Yeah. And also, Chief, could you introduce, we have other members here who are not new?
Yeah. Well, do you guys know Assistant Chief Patty Richards? I think everybody knows Patty. I see Assistant Chief Mark Cooy in the back. I see Officer Clayson Tanner, he was kinda hiding back there, but we found him. Sergeant Isaac Kelgren. And Officer Robert Raymond, barely squeaked by. He's got 14 months on, we just did the last year. So Robert squeaked by. I can tell you we're looking to, within the next two weeks, possibly hire an additional lateral police officer. And tomorrow, we are interviewing five new hire potential officers. So we are right at the edge of being fully staffed to what we're authorized. And we're continuing to work forward as people look to retire, so we can step right in and replace them. And we're trying to have a good balance between new hire officers and lateral officers, building a good solid foundation that we already have, but as we move into the future, to have that solid foundation.
Thanks Chief, is Doug still here?
Doug Webel, I think.
He left.
Oh, he had to take a call.
Okay, and also counsel, that's the chief starting his play for the budget, so, just so. But, but one, I just, thank you Chief, and you know, welcome all of you guys. But I just wanna point out, in this community, you know, relationships are everything. And I hope that all of you appreciate how warmly welcomed, how important you are, how much we appreciate what you do. Think of great leadership in the department, all the way, Assistant Chief Cooy, Patty's doing a great job, Ken, all of that. So we appreciate the leadership, we appreciate your efforts, never forget that. Thank you. Okay, the last thing I wanna do, kind of out of order, but we have some folks here associated with this, is talk a little about our passenger ferry service that we initiated on August 10th. And so this is, goes between Des Moines and Seattle, Pier 66, where the Edgewater is up there.
Bell Harbor.
Well, and, right. And so this has been in place, the first week was free passage. We had a complete booking, all the ridership was booked. You can see week two, we have close to full ridership. And the, so the fares are $10 each way. Active military and seniors, $5. Children under 13 are free. And so we have a count showing there through like one and a half weeks, and we have over $20,000 worth of bookings. So that, and we're hoping that the fare box revenue, we didn't know what it was gonna be, and as, when this ends on October 9th, we'll have a better idea of what our net receipts were, but this is a pretty positive picture. It's been hugely successful, a lot of the rides are fully booked, a number of the rides in advance are fully booked. People, we've gotten a huge amount of support. I think the community would say that it's been complete insanity in the best possible way. Also, one of our council members was concerned about inclement weather and what the ridership would be. It was difficult, but we were able to arrange for thunderstorms and lightnings, day one, and it was a full ferry. So that worked out well. But I just wanna acknowledge the people involved in this. First of all, I think the council deserves a huge amount of credit for having the courage and the choice to put this in place and to allocate the resources to allow us to do it. Our staff has just been phenomenal. I won't go through saying something about each of them, but I'll try to get everyone's name who's associated. Katie Tera from the Marina, Andrea, the Marina Staff for fueling and boat assistance, Peter Phillips, our consultant. Peter, you please stand up, because it's worth, you've been, carried the lion's share. Anthony Hempstead has been involved in helping us, Dan Brewer, Savannah from Parks and Rec, Bonnie, Dale with the IT, and Chris, Michael Doctor has helped us sell tickets and organize all of that. Greg Dronker with Maritime Consulting has helped us with the operating agreements. Chris Hankey and his crew, the ferry boat operator, has just done a phenomenal job and made people feel welcome and safe. And I wanna just mention that the cost for this did not involve one penny of property tax or of community money or citizens' money. The money and the resources came from what's called one-time sales tax. If you do a development in Des Moines of over $15 million, you will pay tax on construction materials. And so we use the money that we've collected from some of the large development projects that occurred in the city have paid for this ferry, up to now. And the fare box revenue will also decrease our amount over time. I don't know, I just, this has been a phenomenal effort. We are a small city, we did this on our own. We didn't use federal funds, we didn't use state funds, we don't have strings attached. We work closely with the port and with the Native American tribes to make sure we didn't intrude in any fishing grounds. There's channels through Puget Sound for the safe passage. We instituted best management practices to make sure that we were working in concert with the tribes. We worked with the port, the city of Seattle is also involved in some of the permitting, but primarily, this is ours. We did it ourselves, and we're a community that doesn't just make plans, we actually do the stuff. So, really been exciting, huge response from everybody in both directions. We've had a number of businesses and restaurants tell us that their patronage has gone up as a result of this. And this is before we do the Marina steps and create access from the Marina to the downtown. So all I can do is say thank you to everyone, and I'd just like to offer, you know, applause to all of you. Anyone associated with anything we've gone over, feel free to leave. And I know that'll be hard on the PD, it's nice and air-conditioned in here. Anyways, thank you Mayor, that concludes this portion of my report.
Thank you. Could we get a copy of those numbers to Councilmember Harrison, Councilmember Oxiger, just so they have them for the rest of us before the end of the meeting? That'd be great. I'm just gonna add, if, from anybody from the public, if you have not taken the ferry, I encourage you to do so. It is a great experience and be prepared to have a really great time, take some family members, you'll really enjoy it. With that, we're gonna move on to correspondence.
Thank you Mayor, no correspondence, but we do have some written public comment. Sherry Halco Ferry, John G Hogan, Masonic Home Preservation, Sandy Sheldon, Masonic Home Ideas, Sandy Can, Sancho, she, sorry, Fast Ferry, Rahab Bag, Landmark on the Sand, Sandy Morehouse, Neighborhood Safety Issues Need to be Prioritized and Police Present More Evident. And that concludes written public comment.
All right, thank you. So now will be the time for public comment. I'd just like to remind those participants that any person making personally impertinent or slanderous remarks, or who become boisterous, threatening, or personally abusive while addressing the council will be removed from the meeting. You will have three minutes to speak. Now we have nine people here, so I'm gonna ask that you definitely stick to your three minutes. When the light goes red, I apologize now, but I will interrupt you. With that, the first group is, we have the Police Foundation, and by rule, they get five minutes, so I give them the floor. Featuring Lila Natalie Nutting, of course.
Good evening. Hi, so I'm Natalie.
I'm Lila.
And this year, we again did our Lemonade Stand fundraiser. We've been doing it since 2014. Last year, we did it for SR3, and this year, we decided to do it for Shop with Cop. This year, in total, we have raised $2,100.
And since we've been doing this since 2014, our grand total for all of the money that we have raised throughout the years is $12,900 for local charities. And we would also like to thank the community for helping support our cause and for donating. Thank you.
And we would like to present our check for this year to the Police Foundation.
Hold on for a photo, hold on for a photo, yeah. Chad, did you wanna say a few words?
I'll say two words, thank you.
All right, our next person to speak is Mr. David Emery.
My name is David Emery, I'm a resident of Redondo Beach Community since 2014. I'm here today to hopefully dispel the myth that I and my fellow residents have simply been whining about a little noise down in our neighborhood. To be clear, the street noise has become vastly worse in our neighborhood over the past couple of years. But to dismiss our concerns as whining ignores the simple truth, that the noise has become so bad, that many of us residents can no longer use our property as we would like, especially now that many of us are working from our home offices. But to be clear, our concerns run much deeper. You've heard on many, many occasions of our concerns about truly reckless driving by the renegade racers that take over our streets virtually every evening. Not only are these cars and trucks deafeningly loud, they also race through our crowded streets at breakneck speeds, blow through stop signs and sidewalks, force families with young children to run for safety and congregate in packs that are apparently too large for the police to even safely make contact. These street gangs essentially take over large sections of the boat launch parking lot, pushing out the visiting families and replacing them with jarring street noise, open drug and alcohol consumption, the cars with burnouts that fill the air with acrid smoke and burnt, from the burning tires, verbally harassing families and young women as they pass by, lighting off fireworks and chucking them at passing vehicles, and putting the whole neighborhood at risk of reckless and drunken drivers. I personally witnessed someone get shot last July in our neighborhood, and this year, I've called the police on three separate occasions about groups of young men openly brandishing handguns. This includes twice where the groups looked as if they had come from or were going to an armed robbery or carjacking, and once when the gang physically took over a street, forcing other drivers to turn around as the members of this group danced in the streets as they passed around the handgun over their heads. Rarely, a day goes by where I don't see one or more visitors openly passing around bottles of hard alcohol and/or joints, only to hop back into their vehicles and drive away clearly inebriated. I've called a number of cases where individuals in very expensive vehicles have been selling drugs by the gallon freezing bags, and even by the garbage bags, right there on the street, just outside of my residence. I could go on and on with these sorts of examples, including examples of prostitution, physical assaults, and blocking of an essential fire lane that blocks access to a fire plug that the two big condos are essential if there were to be a fire down there. Please take note then, we are not whining about a little noise. We are deeply concerned about the safety of our neighborhood and the difficulty with the policing of that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Emery. Moving on to Ms. Sharon Morehouse.
Well, I won't just go on and on about what the gentleman before me said, because I experienced the exact same things. And we hear a lot of noise clear up a mile north in Woodmont. We have trespassers from Redondo in Woodmont off the beach, because the city doesn't seem to be able to replace the no trespassing sign that was taken out in the huge storm that we came here the last time to ask to get replaced. Don't we have a sign company? A division that makes signs? Because every time I drag your signs off the beach, you get them replaced the next day with a new sign. Please take care of that. The issue with the storm took out the whole end of the seawall, we got all this money going into the Marina. It just feels like Redondo is like, not part of Des Moines. There's a lot of double standards. We can have speed bumps up behind the Yellow Bear, but we can't have speed bumps down there. It doesn't seem fair to me, and that's, that's one of the things I wanna talk about. And the signs, we have signs down in Redondo, we have in, not in Redondo, my mistake, at the Marina, that we enforce a noise, we have a noise enforcement enforced, but there's no signs in Redondo, and there's no noise levels enforced there. The chain link fence went down at the end of the seawall, that's still laying there. We threw it back up and tried to wire it in place, but there just seems to be a lot of double standards, where Des Moines gets taken care of and Redondo gets not taken care of, and I'd like to see a little fairness. It's very discriminatory, or so it seems to me. We have the one-way street, people come tearing down the one-way street, going the wrong way, and flying around the corner, right in front of that last condo that's on this corner. They just tear down there all the time. We have people parking every night where it says, "No parking," and the police ask them kindly to leave. How about we tow them away or give them a ticket? How about we enforce that? How about we enforce the law? Not just ask them politely to move. That's very, Redondo has my utmost sympathy, because I'm sure glad I didn't buy a house there. I'd had to move. Yeah, the speed bumps things, we got speed bumps in Des Moines, we can't have them. And we have speed bumps at the Marina, there's no traffic there. There's nobody speeding at the Marina. Why do we have speed bumps there and we can't have them down in Redondo? That's a problem. I see that as a problem. Okay, I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Morehouse. I'm gonna ask the public, in decorum for the council meeting, usually applause and so forth is something we frown against, it's more to be informational and so forth. It's, it's more to be informational and so forth, and I understand your support, but I'm asking in a respectful way that you hold the applause, please. With that, we'll move on to, I believe it's Kay Jan, or Van. Van?
Hello, my name is Kay Van. I moved into Redondo Beach about a year, about fourteen, no, fourteen months ago. The first three months I was there, I worked from home. I heard gunshot on 180th. As, my desk is next by, by the window. I was lucky. I just felt like I was lucky that night. I want to echo what David and Sharon has says. The speeding, the noise, it's more of public safety and all the nuisances going around in Redondo Beach. I felt like we are a stepchild to Des Moines. All of us do, because we're not, we're, it doesn't seem like we're being taken serious of all, all the com, I don't want to say complaint, but all the issues that we have down there. One is the parking. It's crazy. They do donuts, they do wheelies in there. We have kids, we have people walking dogs. Boat launch, it's packed with drivers. I've seen many people's almost got hit when they were trying to back out of there, or people trying to go and park there during the beautiful sunset. Yes, we all want to enjoy the beautiful sunset, but safety has to come first. Speed bumps. I researched speed bump. They're $175 apiece. I'm begging to get speed bumps. I walk my dog down there two, three times a day. I've seen people going 50, 60 on that street. That's crazy, coming down the hill on the boatwalk. Could you imagine, God forbid, heaven forbid, if any one of us or any of our kids get hit? Is that, what it's going to take for something, for the support from the city? What is it that we need to do? We need to work together. Our community, our resident is willing to do more work with the, with the city to come up with something to make sure that our community, our resident is saved. 181st, 180th, both street comes down into the, the boatwalk. And then, I don't know what street that is, at the other end. 280, that goes all the way up? I'm begging, I'm begging for the city to help to put the bumpers on there. First is the safety. I'm, I'm worried about one of our kids. I don't have kids of my own, but any kids, any one of us will get run over by them. Thank you. Last, I want to push, just want to thank the officers that I've seen this week. They've done a great, great job being there. I've noticed a few that I, that I see regularly down there. I really appreciate it. And then I, it's good that we're trying to make the city of Des Moines vibrant, but safety has to come first before anything else, before any one of us is hurt. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Van. Moving on to Ms. Melanie Barlow.
Thank you. Also part of our group from Bay Shore Condominiums. Thank you for this opportunity. I just also want to thank everyone who's already, always spoke so far about the, the major issues that we have. So the issues that I have are not as important, but I fully support the most important issues that have already been spoken of. Pot smoking, we, the amount of pot smoke and the stench is really quite amazing. I have never, I'm a traveler. I travel for business. I travel all over the U.S. I've never walked anywhere where there was the massive stench of pot that I experienced down at the beach. And also, I, we wanted to acknowledge that there are now poop cleanup signs near the restrooms. I don't know if anybody's read the signs, but I've read every single one of them, and the verbiage is very juvenile. It's as if the, the verbiage is for the children to educate them. That's fine about cleaning, keeping the water clean, but there's none, none of those nine signs, which is a little overkill, talk to pet owners, talk to the adults. It's as if the verbiage is for children, not for adults. So, you know, we, somebody got them approved, they're up, that's great, but I don't believe that it, it addresses the issue at all. Leash laws, a lot of dogs are walked without leashes. That puts the dogs that are on leashes at risk. Also do want to have the moment to say thank you, because I also, the last couple of nights, have noticed the additional police presence, presence. It's been quite amazing, so thank you very much for that. And then, just to go back to Kay, the speed bumps, the, we're talking about the rubber speed bumps, the cheap $175 rubber speed bumps. We, we don't understand what, what could possibly be a hesitation to go forward with that. There's still issues with people using personal property as the restroom, even though there is a restroom there, and overnight car camping. There, we, we kind of pooled about 20 people from our area to come up with things that they wanted to have represented, and one of the folks said that there's car campers on the roads every morning when he gets up and gets ready to go to work, and wondered if there was any laws or regulations against that at the beach. I think that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Barlow. Moving on to Mr. Gary Peterson.
Hi, I'm Gary Peterson, 509 South 222nd. I want, I'm here to talk about the Fifth Street. I want that shut down, blocked off, because I'm getting tired of the cars going up and down that road. And it's just constantly going on, and I agree with the other lady said about the drugs or the smoking and the new park on the new deck. People are just making a mess, and I just want to do that. And so anyway, I want you guys to please think about shutting that road down and make a cul-de-sac. I'll get him, I'll get on my hands and knees and beg if you please start it right away, because it needs to be done. And also, 24th needs to be policed, because people are going back and forth without stopping off the stop sign. And I'm afraid somebody's going to get hit. I've been going through there, and it's just, I stopped, looked both ways, people are still going through that stop sign without stopping. It's a Oregon, not Oregon, but the Cana-Forney stop, and they just don't stop at all at the stop signs. And that's all I got to say, but I want to promise you guys on that Fifth Street, is there anything I could do to help, but I'd get on my hands and knees and beg to let you guys get it done? Thank you.
The city manager has a quick comment on, on that Fifth Avenue.
Yeah, Gary, it's been discussed for a while. It's in our plan that we will close Fifth at some point, create the cul-de-sac you're talking about, and try to redirect traffic away from that continuous flow up Fifth.
When can, when can you guys do that?
That's, that's a function of resources and manpower, and, and I can't give you a definite answer, but it's in the works, and it's something we want to do as soon as we can.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Moving on to Ms. Barbara McMichael.
Good evening. My name's Barbara McMichael, 22810 Thunderbird Drive. My partner in crime couldn't be here tonight, but Lloyd Lytle Jr. started a grassroots petition just to give folks and I a way of expressing their concern about the proposed demolition of the Des Moines Masonic Home. And he wanted me to report tonight that it's up to 1,988 signatures, and he says by tomorrow, he thinks it will break 2,000. And Lloyd was also in the King 5 news report last week and learned that that was the most popular news on their website, I think it was. So people regionally are really interested in, of course, the fate of the Des Moines Masonic Home. I will just say that I had read all of the material of, put together by the historian who was hired to do a kind of historical survey of home, and one of the things that really touched me was that when it was dedicated in 1927, the Grand Master, I don't have the terminology completely right, but said, "This home is dedicated to the service of love." And I think about all of the love that is embodied in that building over the last many, many, you know, 95 years. So one of the things I was trying to do to help Lloyd out with this petition is I, I went ahead and started doorbelling my neighborhood, and I've ended up going to a little bit over 300 homes and a bunch of businesses in downtown Des Moines. And I can report that out of all of the interactions I had, three people said, "Tear it down." And so many of the rest of the people loved the home, were grateful that somebody was out there, you know, me, with my little petition, but were grateful to have a chance to be able to express themselves. And, and many of them had personal associations with the home, whether they worked there, their dad worked there, they visited their grandpa there, just so many, delivered dry cleaning there, trick or treated there, you know, on and on. But there is so much love in the community for that structure. I'm just reporting to you, the city council, so that when all of this issue comes up, an owner who knew about that love in the community would really be able to bank on that in some wonderful ways. And so that's what I'm reporting to you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMichael. Moving on to, and I hope I pronounce this right, Kent Hale?
Got it right, thank you. Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you. Community members, thank you for an opportunity to speak with you today. My wife, who's with me here as well, we live in Redondo. We've been there about two years. We, we love it down there, but there've been a lot of comments today about what's going on down there, and I, and I agree with, with all of them. I don't live quite as close to the, the boat launch, but I understand at night, it's a little sketchy down there, to, to say the least. I want to thank you for the increased police presence, because it's, it's certainly been there, but it, it's simply not enough. I mean, the noise and the public safety issue really kind of go hand in hand. Revving engines, high speeds, those things kind of come together. I think personally that the idea of speed bumps on 281st make a lot of sense. From an economic perspective, I understand that there is a, a cost to that and an ongoing maintenance to that, but someone is really going to die, and I'm not being melodramatic. I live right on 281st. We have a lovely deck, and it is very common that someone will come off the beach, and they'll be going by my house, I'm on Ninth, and going 50, 60 miles an hour. It's commonplace. They slow down, and then they blast all the way up Tenth. And again, there is a presence there, but they can't be there all the time. And it is, it is not just a bunch of folks that bought houses at the beach that are, it's a little noisy, and so we're going to complain. It's dangerous. There's no sidewalks. We're not asking that sidewalks get put in, but it's dangerous. And, you know, I'd invite any of you, you're welcome anytime, 24 hours advance notice, to, to sit on the deck and, and watch it. I'll cook you a hamburger and a hot dog and give you a nice cool drink, but it's, it's, I'm not trying to be glib, it's, it's dangerous, and something needs to happen. And I'm sure there are reasons why speed bumps haven't been done there before. I'm sure it's, it's been evaluated. If you don't put speed bumps there, let's make a little money and let's put some traffic cameras on those, and, and really ones that will dispense and issue tickets, because we have to do something about this. It's dangerous. It's dangerous. And I do think if we address the speed issue to a great extent, but not completely, we'll end up addressing some of the noise issues at the same time. So I think everybody can get what they want, but I would hate to see on the news and be with my fellow community members and have somebody that actually died, walking a dog or a child that's going out to get a ball. My time's coming to an end. I appreciate the opportunity, but please, I mean, we can put 100 people in this room, if that's what it takes, but we're going to get to a place where something very bad happens, and we're all going to feel bad that we didn't do something when we had an opportunity before that did. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Hale. Moving on to Luis Medina.
Hi, good afternoon. This is my first city council meeting, so nice to meet you guys. I recently purchased a part of ownership in a restaurant outside of the, just getting out of the freeway, called Menudaria Maria. So we sell actual Mexican food, done the right way. That's, that's subjective, right? So everybody, it's concerning that I come in, I sign in, and more than 60% of the list is public safety. I don't know if we live in the, in the same part of the city, or if you guys walk it, or if you guys drive it. It's different for everybody, right? Obviously, the socioeconomic status in this room is very different to what I live, because my, my customers are below average. Outside my restaurant, I find government giving needles, the orange ones, I don't know which ones they are. I found cigarette butts, I find blood, I find piss, and I find shit. It's right in the corner. The police has done an excellent job. Unfortunately, nothing will change besides public opinion, because power has been taken from them, right? It doesn't make sense for the, for the sergeant and his guys to show up and tell them to move politely. I do it myself, you know? There was an accident in Las Vegas three weeks ago, where a smoke shop owner, some guys underage, I think they were 17, came in and stole, stole from the guy, the guy stabbed him to death, right? He was in his right, it's a store, he works hard for it. That's what I've been doing. Unfortunately, I've had a few incidents like that. I wouldn't like something like that to happen to any business or anybody in their property, because somebody else is trespassing. People are afraid. When people are afraid, we commit atrocities, unfortunately. We don't want that. So you guys have to get your state legislators and everybody, give them back the power they need to do the stuff they need to do right, because keeping it moving, I can do that. I do it already. Most of the people here will drive. My business is in Pac 99. It's not the same thing as downtown Des Moines. I would encourage everybody to go and walk down Pac 99 with their family, or stay at a bus stop, right there crossing Kent, where people are using heroin, smoking crack in front of my business, or Midway Donuts, right? Or the USPS station. If smoking crack, using heroin in the middle of the day is acceptable, and walking out of Walgreens with thousands of dollars daily is acceptable, shit, I'm going to do it too, you know? Unfortunately, that's the world we live in. You guys need to do something about it. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Medina. With that, we're going to return back to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, going to ask the city attorney to discuss consent item number nine, give a little background to the council.
Thank you, Michael. Consent item number nine is a housekeeping ordinance. We are asking the council to approve it on first reading. It is regarding civil protection orders and domestic violence orders. This ordinance updates our criminal code to reflect the changes the state legislature made with numbering. No new crimes are being created. No new crimes are being created and existing laws remain in effect. We're simply closing a potential loophole that would prevent our prosecutor from filing certain cases due to change in the numbering. So it's our opinion that delaying that to a second reading would extend this potential loophole for another 30 days, but it would serve no purpose. So that's just an update on number nine. If there's additional questions, we can take them. Thank you.
That concludes our report, Mayor. Thank you. I think there's a clarification of some people have showed that may wish, want to speak. Typically, we just do the signup sheet and then we move forward. There's one person. I'm sorry?
You read her name out.
I did. I went through the nine that were on the list.
Ray Haub in the beginning, but it was said that there's comments.
So those comments that you submitted were written on the record. There's a signup sheet for public speaking. On this, this just rare occasion, because I think there's a misunderstanding, I'll give you three minutes. You have the floor. Please introduce yourself and the city you live in.
Hi. My name is Ray Haub Beg. I live in the city of Auburn. I am a neighbor and frequent visitor to Des Moines. I'm here to advocate for the preserving of the Des Moines landmark on the sound. My appreciation for the landmark on the sound began when I came across it a couple years ago when I'm driving around Des Moines. Since then, I've been learning, learning more about the significant influence it has made in the community and why its preservation is important for communal, environmental, historical, and cultural reasons. A key point that I will be addressing is that the preserving of the landmark on the sound aligns with the city of Des Moines' community engagement video that was recently published on the Des Moines Council Members YouTube channel on August 10th, 2022, which was just about two weeks ago. In this video, Des Moines', Des Moines' assistant Arbor Master Katie Bevingney states that the Marina is a focal point of this community. And Des Moines Civil Engineer Tyler Beakley states that, quote, "The most important aspects of our department are public safety and environmental impact. As far as water quality and impact to the Puget Sound, we work really hard in investigating sources of pollution and stopping those." Demolishing the landmark on the sound will in fact negatively impact the quality of life for residents, species of plants, biodiversity in wildlife, as well as harm marine life due to runoff in the Puget Sound water in the Des Moines area. Additionally, the demolition will contribute to polluting the air quality by adding amounts of carbon emissions through the process of removal. The potential blasts of demolishing a building can also cause seismic waves that can negatively affect all species in the area. Right next door to the landmark on the sound is a senior retirement care living facility, which consists of rehabilitation, memory care, skilled nursing, and assisted living seniors residing within the proximity, which puts all senior living there in direct harm from the noise pollution, debris in the air, and potential negative adjustments to their caregivers accessing the location due to future road closures. All these negative ecological impacts go against the words of the Des Moines Council Members' video for the values said to be upheld in the city of Des Moines. With that said, as you can see, demolishing the landmark on the sound not only impacts the ecological nature of the environment, it hurts the community members and the legacy of the city of Des Moines. The demolition comes with the price of lost irreplaceable heritage, culture, architecture, and history. Instead of, instead, the beautiful building can be repurposed and rehabilitated into a community center, affordable or transitional housing, or a museum, which would significantly reduce ecological harm while also upholding the city's stated values. Thank you for your time and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. So we, we had, I believe, was there any questions asked of the city, city manager in his report before I move on to the consent agenda? Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. So regarding the civil protection order, city attorney, could you describe what the loophole is that's being filled?
Yeah, I think it's in the packet, but it's just that we adopt our, we adopt state laws by reference. So we, the council doesn't write out the entire state law. They say this is adopted RCW blank. And the state legislature changed the numbers. So the RCWs that we've adopted, the numbers are now different. So we're correcting those numbers to represent the new numbers. And so this, there's been an argument with defense attorneys saying that, you know, because the numbers are wrong, because the state legislator changed those, that they aren't effectively adopted. So we're in an effort to make sure that we have those done correctly. We're matching our code with the recently changed numbers.
So it's, it's literally a question of, you know, it used to refer to 36 dot 1 dot whatever, and it actually should refer now to, you know, 42 dot 33.
Exactly. The, the state legislature moved a whole section from 26 to chapter seven, title seven.
Thank you, city attorney.
Yep.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll have the city clerk read the consent agenda.
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, step, stepfamily day proclamation. Item three, National Recovery Month proclamation. Item four, National Preparedness Month proclamation. Item five, interagency reimbursement agreement, IAA 23717 between Washington State, AOC, and the Des Moines Municipal Court. Item six, acceptance of Washington State Administrative Offices of the Courts, Des Moines Municipal Court Therapeutic Court Grant. Item seven, interlocal agreement for joint supervision of defendants, consolidated supervision services between South King County Municipal Courts. Item eight, amendment to grant, grant agreement with the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office, providing additional funding for the Marina's guest mortgage electrical project. Item nine, draft ordinance number 22 dash 043, amending DMMC 9.68.070 to update silver protection order violations. And that concludes the consent calendar. Mayor?
Thank you. Are there any items any council member wishes to pull?
Yes, Mayor.
Councilmember Harris.
Numbers five, six, eight, and nine. I'm sorry, I'm sort of doing councilmember stammer tonight, but yeah, five, six, eight, and nine.
Is there any other council members that wish to pull an item? Seeing none, for the consent agenda, we have item one, item two, item three, item four, and item seven. All those in favor, raise your right hand. As a consent agenda should be, all voted positive. So moving on, I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamations and then we'll go to item five, councilmember Harris, if that's acceptable.
Yes, Mayor.
All right. Whereas National Step Family Day is enhanced by our strong commitment to support the stepfamilies of our nation and their mission to raise their children, create strong families, structures to support the individual members of the family, instill in them the sense of responsibility to all extended family members. And whereas approximately half of all Americans are currently involved in some form of stepfamily relationship, and it is the vision of Christie Tusing Borgeld and the Step Family Foundation that all stepfamilies in the United States be accepted, supported, and successful. And whereas Washington has been blessed by thousands upon thousands of loving stepparents and stepchildren who are daily reminder of the joy, trials, and triumphs of stepfamily experience and of the boundless love contained in the bond between all types of parents and children. And whereas National Step Family Day is a day to celebrate the many invaluable contributions stepfamilies have made to enriching the lives and life experience of children and parents of Americans and to strengthen the fabric of the American family and society. Now therefore, the Des Moines City Council hereby proclaims September 16th as a day to celebrate National Step Family Day. Sign this day in August. Mayor Matt Mahoney. This is for National Recovery Month. Whereas behavior, health, behavioral health is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness. And whereas prevention of mental and/or substance use disorder works, works, treatment is effective and people recover in our area and around the nation. And whereas preventing an overcoming mental and/or substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally. And whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and/or substance use disorders to implement preventive measures, recognize the signs of, of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services. Whereas an estimated 400,000 people in King County are affected by these conditions. Now therefore, to help more people and sustain long-term recovery, the United States Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, and the City of Des Moines invites all residents to participate and proclaim this month of September as National Recovery Month. Sign this day. Matt Mahoney, Mayor. Our final proclamation is for National Preparedness Month. Whereas National Preparedness Month, occurring annually in September since 9/11, creates an ideal opportunity for every resident to join citizens across the United States in preparing their homes, businesses, and communities for any type of emergency, including natural disasters and potential terrorist attacks. Whereas planning now before a disaster is the best way to improve community recovery from disaster. And whereas, when individuals take responsibility for preparing their families and their communities, the chance of survival and return to normalcy following a disaster is greatly increased. Whereas first responders may not always be able to reach you quickly in an emergency or disaster, and the most important step you can take in helping them is being able to take care of yourself and those in your care for at least a short period of time following an incident. And whereas during National Preparedness Month, community members are encouraged to take time to prepare yourself and those in care for emergencies and disasters that can impact our neighborhoods for the, for days at a time. And now therefore, this, the Des Moines City Council hereby declares September as National Preparedness Month. I will add, and I'm going to sign this, this day as mayor, but I will add that there is cert training in our community that I strongly recommend people look into and take in the community because that's a great help in these types of conditions. All right. With that, we will move on to item five. Councilmember Harris, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. It's more just a couple of questions. So it says that there are 228 cases in our municipal court that potentially might be subject to refund. So I guess my question is, well, let's see here. It says that we're going to get $190,000 total. Do we know what the total potential obligation might be?
Well, it keeps changing. So when I wrote this report at the time, the report that was provided for us resulted in 228. Since then, AOC has tweaked the report a bit. So the potential that I know of is about 55,000 that we need to reimburse.
Right, right. Des Moines, 55,000?
Yes. Yes. It's a period of time. It goes from 2007 through 2016. So that's nine years.
Okay, 220, okay. Well, so I guess my question is that, like, okay, so $190,000, does this open any door towards increasing our potential obligation or like, in other words, does knowing that there is this fund increase the likelihood of former, you know, defendants coming forth to, to make claims or to increase our liability? Do you understand what I'm just saying? If they, if, I'm, I'm just trying to quantify what our potential risk is and if this grant money somehow might increase that risk in some way? Or is that a silly question?
I think, I think I understand your question. So this, this grant is money to use to reimburse the defendants. So we have actually been in the process since June, working with different other municipalities within the South End to come up with a solution of how we can start that process. This grant was just kind of dumped on the municipal courts and the district courts. AOC gave superior courts much more guidance than they have us. They gave us these grants and said, "Go figure it out. You need to set up a plan to reimburse these defendants for these previous convictions." So we had notified the city attorney's office in regards to this because this came up in 2017. They had taken care of quite a few of the, the charges then, but this is for those years prior to that. And the 190,000 actually is two different pots of money. And so one pot of money is for the reimbursements to the defendants. The other pot of money is for the time that is being spent to prepare all these cases. And that is going to be covering the courts, actually be covering the public defender's office or the city attorney's office and even the public defender's office. And this only goes through, through June of next year. After June of next year, all of it's going to go to AOC and they're going to start handling it from that point forward. But they've directed us, in the meantime, for the next 10 months, to try and figure out how we can start this process.
Yeah, I mean, I get it. You know, nobody says no, I guess, to free money, but this just seems like, like it's sort of opening the door to something down the road that, I don't know exactly what, but, okay. And is there any, in that 88.5, I think you described it, but that's not like for any kind of like civil forfeiture money?
No.
Okay, all right. That's for our legal work or the, yeah. Can you explain again the 88.5, you know, specifically what that's going to?
So the 80, so the 88,000 portion is for the time that the city attorney's office spends working on those specific cases because they're going to have to be set for hearings. It's time that I'm spending and, or my staff is spending in regards to pulling these cases, getting them calendared and things like that. And this also includes the judge's time.
And, and when do you know the, the, you know, when do you get some certitude as far as like 228 versus 55,000?
So the 228, it's a, it's called a, it's a query that was created. And so that query was provided to us. And so we ran our report. And when I ran it at the time, it was 700, it was 228. And I know that there has been some tweaking to the report because there's been a lot of discussion across Washington State to making sure it's covering everything of what needs to be reimbursed. And so AOC has continued to send that back to us and...
But I mean, like January, March, I mean, will there be some kind of thing?
Jennifer, if I, if I may, just for the record, Jennifer Johnson's the chief executive officer of the court. Okay. And those, those are, I understand those questions. I think perhaps it could have been easier if those had been submitted to us in writing in advance of the meeting. But the key point being that Judge Lisa would be here today, but she was unable to attend. Jennifer takes care of a lot of the administrative pieces. But generally speaking, we try to keep separate, separation of powers between what the court needs to do and what the city needs to do. And ultimately, the council has budgetary authority, as, as do I relative to the court, but we tend to trust and rely on the court's judgment for legal affairs. And in this instance, Judge Lisa was supportive of this, providing this to council for a vote. So I'm not sure the value of going into the level of detail we're talking about here. But just so you would know, we would typically sign off on this because it was the court requesting it. They're very responsible in their requests.
No doubt. I just, okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Johnson.
You're welcome.
All right. I'm going to make the motion is to approve the interagency reimbursement agreement between the administrative offices- the administrative offices of the courts and the City of Des Moines for the extraordinary cost reimbursements and legal financial obligations reimbursements as a result of the state versus Blake decision, and further authorize the judge of the Des Moines Municipal Court to sign the agreement substantially in the form as submitted.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Six, zero passes. All right. Councilmember Harris, Item 6, Acceptance of Washington State Administrative Office of the Courts' Des Moines Municipal Court Therapeutic Court Grant.
Councilmember Harris, I'm going to actually introduce our support services manager, and she's going to answer questions on this grant. Alyssa Patrick.
Hi there.
Hello, Councilmember.
I thought we were done with this, but I mean, if you happen to have any more, you know, something just to my question as to when that number of claims will come into focus, that's really...
I think we're moving on to the next item that you pulled from the consent.
Oh, this, this is that thing. Oh, I see. Okay, great. Well, no, this is more a, more rhetorical. I was, in the spirit of Councilmember Steinmetz, I wish he were here because this is something that I think should be a full agenda item. We are shifting our policing and court system to a very different model, and I think this is something that the public should be informed about. I really don't have any questions at the moment because we talked about it last year, but basically, the court system is changing dramatically, and I would love for the council to get an update on that. But today is not that day. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember, if I may, you know, the opportunity, I think, to kind of review the direction of departments will occur during our budget retreats, September 8th. So you will have access to senior staff at that point and court senior staff to discuss those, those items. And yes, the model of administering justice is becoming much more holistic and inclusive in the process. So you can ask that at the retreat, and I'm sure you'll get answers to your questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Nutting. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Councilmember Nutting and then Deputy Mayor Buxton.
I can make the motion. Can you make the motion?
Yeah. Move to accept the grant from the Washington Administrative Office of the Courts in the amount of 87,000 for the purpose of supplementing operations of the Des Moines Municipal Court Support Services and authorize the judge of the Des Moines Municipal Court to sign the contract sustained substantially in the form as attached.
Second. Second by Deputy Mayor Buxton. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Item 6, please raise your right hand. Item passes six, zero. All right. Moving on to Item 8. Councilmember Harris, you have the floor.
Thank you. So it's more, you know, again, another, I have no doubt that the, the electrical system will benefit from this, but I'm curious, is this, is this work going to be in any way rendered redundant by the work that we're commencing with LM and N? I'm just struck by the notion of a supercharger for a 55-foot cabin cruiser. I mean, really? Or, and if it's a real thing, it's 50 amps. And this will sound, but I mean, is there a bigger breaker box we should be thinking about for five years from now? If I'm being rhetorical, it's...
No, Councilmember Harris, no. What we're doing is, we are, as you know, our system and our gas mortgages from, in the 80s, and everything is 20-amp duplex and 30-amp twist locks. Boats now have microwaves, washers and dryers, all kinds of stuff. So we went after the grant and got the original grant to upgrade everything to 50-amp service. And then with the pandemic hit, things have been going since 2018 and so on and so on. And then we learned more about electrification of boats. So now we're moving forward that. We went back, asked for more money, which they're giving us, and that money will be putting in the infrastructure, the breaker panel, the transformers, to bring the power to different locations, to install superchargers when we know exactly what those are. But at this point, we're just going to bring in the transformer, bring in the power, put in the backbone, put in the infrastructure, and put in the 50-amp, which will carry boats now that are electrified. We've had a couple come in, they plug into the 50-amp. It's slow charges, but it charges. So we want to do that, but this extra money is going to allow for those, those pieces of equipment to be ready for electric boats.
No, thank you. I'm not trying to micromanage. I'm just trying to get my head around the idea of a boat that can get from here beyond Three Tree Point.
The catamaran that we had come in a few months back, 40-foot catamaran, all electric, all solar panel, whole bottom of it was boats, came in, spent the night, recharged. We asked what kind of his nautical, and he says, you know, to be honest, he's never had a place he hadn't been able to go.
And 50 amps does not impinge upon any of the service for...
No, no, we have the power at the, down in the docks.
Okay. Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Buxton.
I would like to move to approve amendment number one to the grant agreement for project number 19-1532D, increasing the grant amount by $45,648 to authorize an additional expenditure of marina operating funds of $15,216 to provide the required additional matching funds and to authorize the city manager to sign the amendment substantially in the form as attached.
Second. I have a second from Councilmember Pennington. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion, item passes six, zero. All right. Moving on to Item 9. Councilmember Harris, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just me being, saying that Rule 26A should rarely, if ever, be put on an agenda item. It should be the purview of the council. There should be the most extraordinary circumstances. And even if this is strictly perfunctory, the notion of a civil protection order, it's a perfect opportunity to put on a main item and allow women, in particular, an opportunity to provide public comment. And that's about it. Let's vote.
Do I have any other, just other points or discussion? All right. Seeing, Deputy Mayor Buxton? Make it away. Make the first one.
I move to suspend Rule 26A in order to enact draft ordinance number 22-043 on first reading.
Second. Councilmember Nutting, seconds. Any discussion before I take a vote? Seeing none, all those in favor of suspending Rule 26A? All those, I see, I see Councilmember Pennington, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Oxger, and myself. All those opposed? Councilmember Harris. Motion passes five, one. All right. Moving on to Motion 2.
I move to enact draft ordinance number 22-043, amending DMMC 9.68.070 to adopt by reference certain RCW sections relating to criminal violations of court orders.
Second. Councilmember Nutting has seconded the motion. Any discussion before I take the vote? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes six, zero. All right. We will be moving on to new business, and we start with the Washington State Opioid Distributor Settlement, and I turn it over to the city attorney, Tim George.
Thank you, Mayor. So the Attorney General recently settled a lawsuit against three pharmaceutical companies that were, that contributed to the opioid crisis. The settlement amount is 518 million to be paid over 17 years. In order for Des Moines to receive a share of those funds, we need to have council approve the two agreements that are in the packet tonight and associated with this motion. So approving this motion, the city would receive roughly $250,000 minus attorney's fees over the next 17 years, which is our proportionate share of the settlement funds. That concludes my presentation.
Councilmember Nutting.
I move to approve the City of Des Moines' participation in the Washington State Opioid Distribution Settlement Agreement and to direct the city manager to sign the attached settlement participation form and the allocation agreement substantially in the form as attached.
Second. Councilmember Pennington has seconded. Any discussion or questions before I take a vote? Councilmember Nutting.
I think with the, how rampant the opioids are and how we desperately need the funds to deal with it, this is a no-brainer for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris, did I see you raise your hand as well?
Yes, Mayor. So do we know what their legal fees are going to be? Yeah, you mentioned attorney's fees in the...
It's 15% of the settlement amount. So we would receive 250,000 minus 15%.
Thank you. I would, the other question I have is, it's more of a, perhaps a potential amendment. I, what are the limitations that, it seems like the, you know, the, what these funds can be used for are, is pretty open-ended. And I'd like to see if there's any interest in limiting this more specifically to purposes of rehab and counseling and that sort of thing, because it seems like they could...
Are you, are you making a motion?
Well, before we do that, I think maybe a little explanation. This agreement was negotiated by the Attorney General with the opioid manufacturers and deliverers, or, so we, the city council has no ability to amend this agreement. The council does have the authority to spend the funds when they're received. So once they're received, the council can make that decision on how to spend them.
Okay. So just in terms of parliamentary, you're saying it wouldn't be appropriate to specify a use of funds at this point?
Well, this council could, and then the next council could change their mind. You can't buy the future council on budget matters, so...
Understood. Could you, okay, that's fine. Yeah, let's vote.
All right. Somebody want to make the motion?
I did.
Oh, you did, I'm sorry. With that, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes six, zero. Okay. Thank you. Moving on to Item 2, Cash Handling Policy.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll have Jeff say a few words in a minute. Regarding this item, cash handling policy, we're asking council to, to approve a policy for the manner in which the city conducts itself dealing with cash. But a little of the background of this. Council is, is well aware, and most of you have participated, if not all of you, in the various exit interviews and occasionally entrance interview conducted by the state auditor. And the City of Des Moines has received consistently clean grades on, on our financial conduct and process. However, there was a finding issued by the auditor in 2020. It reflects back to the manner in which cash was handled by a previous parks director and assistant that did not follow accepted principles of safeguarding the public trust and safeguarding public money. And so the auditor dinged us for that. As soon as we discovered what those, those previous practices were, and this was July of 2018, we significantly changed the manner in which we handled cash to make it accountable and not to put employees at risk who were handling cash without those controls, because it works in both directions. Not only are we at risk for theft, but people who handle the cash are at risk for being alleged to have done whatever it is, and there are no controls in place. So this addresses past practices, most of, in fact, all of which have been addressed by updates that we have implemented to protect the manner in which we deal with this. And Jeff's going to give us just a brief overview of that. I think this is a wise thing to do, and it's once again a statement that we are going to safeguard the public trust regarding resources. Jeff, Jeff Friend is our deputy director of finance.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. This should be brief. To quote the, the state auditor's office, "City management is responsible for designing, implementing, and maintaining internal controls to provide reasonable assurance public resources are safeguarded against misappropriation or loss." So as a result, we wrote this cash handling policy after meeting with various departments in the city to learn the cash processes. We researched best practices for governments and cash handling. We took cash management training courses, and finally, we consulted cash handling policies from other cities. And we think as a result, we have a cash handling policy that is a clear roadmap for day-to-day operations and also provides for strong oversight. So that's the end of my comments, and if anybody has any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Nutting.
I move to adopt draft resolution number 22-044, establishing a cash handling policy for the city.
Second. Do you have any discussion or questions? Councilmember Harris.
I would move to amend the language in Section 10X, non-city money. The sentence that says, "Non-city money is money that is collected from a non-city entity such as park adoption organizations," I would like to replace park adoption organizations to nonprofit organizations. I think it is appropriate to make that a generalized statement because it could apply to any number of nonprofits that we partner with.
If I, if I may, councilmember respectfully disagree with you, believe that it should be as generalized as possible.
You agree it should be generalized?
I, I disagree with your designation of nonprofits specifically, because I would encourage council to adopt something that's more generalized per the language that's currently in there.
Well, this seems very specific, so I'm, maybe we're not, you know, just talking across purposes, but I think that the sentence, "Non-city money is money that is collected from a non-city entity such as park adoption organizations," is, it's, it should apply to any nonprofit that we have a relationship with, because that, this kind of cash handling problem could happen with, you know, any kind of relationship like that. And that's the motion.
I think, I'm sorry, may I, if I...
But, but please, if I'm, no, if there's a, please.
I think the suggestion was that we could just say organizations and then not specify nonprofit organizations specifically. So that would even be more general.
Great. I just, to me, yeah, so if we could remove the, in fact, if, if that being the case, I would like, I would move, "Non-city money is money that is collected from a non-city entity," and just end the sentence, and just end, end the sentence there. There's no need for any kind of, you know, examples, but, you know, but certainly park adoption is too, too specific, so, yeah. I would like those two words, or, yeah, those two words removed.
I'm just taking a look at this now. I think that definitely the non-city entity pretty much encompasses anybody that's not the city.
Yeah, I think you could just put a period there and probably call it good.
Well, there's more to the sentence that we need there. But the park adoption organization, not sure what that is. Jeff, do you know?
That was in language that I found while, or, that we found during research, that wasn't intended to weight towards a park. It was just a general example that I found, so...
Yeah. So we could leave that up to the council. I think the employee associations are by, that's a good, that's a good example for somebody reading that, recognizing that an employee association is a non-city entity. You may not realize that. So I would recommend definitely leaving it as is unless there was a different idea on that park adoption organization.
Well, I would, I would move to strike that clause, such as park adoption... Well, I, I would, I would move to strike that clause, such as park adoption organizations, those...
Before, before you make the motion, sir, I'm just going to interject here. The, the language is such as park adoption organizations, employee associations, or by a city employee, et cetera. It's not all-inclusive. It's very general, but it gives some examples or specifics. I don't think your motion's necessary.
Well, it is, it is...
But if you feel so, go ahead and make the motion, and we'll see where it goes.
I do make the motion. I would like to excise the word such as, I can't, such as park adoption organizations.
So, just those words?
Yes, those five little...
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. I'll get, open the floor to you, Councilmember Harris, for discussion. Just make your pitch and then we'll take a vote.
My, my pitch is that it's unnecessary, and, and anything spec, with any kind of specificity like that, it just, it has a tone, and it should be as generalized as possible.
And, and my pitch back is that it's such as, it's just an et cetera, it's a, it's a list of items that are possibly in this, in, in the mode, and there are others. With that, any other discussion before I take a vote? On this motion to strike those words from the contract. See none? All those in favor of Councilmember Harris's motion, please raise your hand. I see Councilmember Harris, I see Councilmember Oxger. All those opposed? I see Councilmember Pennington, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, and myself. The motion fails two-four. With that, was that, was that the only thing you had before we take the vote on the, on the actual cash handling policy?
That's it.
Okay. And you made the motion, we have the second. No further discussion with all those, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Harris, Council, Council, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Oxger, and myself. Motion passes six-zero. All right. Moving on to introduction of items for future consideration. We will move on, this is the time for sole purpose of proposing new business items that have not previously been before the council for discussion on a future agenda. This is not a time for questions about old business. Council members can submit questions or seek updates on previously discussed business to the city manager at any time. Do any council members have new business that they would like to propose? Councilmember Nutting?
Thank you, Mayor. It has come to my attention that Highline Public Schools is putting a bond on the November ballot. It is a bond not to increase taxes but to continue the taxes that are already in place. With this bond, they will be redoing, the, the, the schools that will be affected are Evergreen High School in White Center, Taiyi High School in Sea-Tac, and Pacific Middle School here in Des Moines. Three of these schools, three, these three schools are in desperate need of repairs and are some of the oldest schools in the district that have not been updated in a very long time. For that, I, I would move that, at our next regular meeting, that we, that staff drafts a resolution that they bring to council that we can approve at that meeting if the rest of my council members agree.
Do I see other council, do I s...
Draft a resolution to...
Draft, draft a resolution in support of Highline Schools and the bond that will be on the November ballot.
Do I have two other council members to support that? I see two others, that's all we need. We'll move it to a future, future agenda.
Thank you, colleagues, for your support.
All right. Moving on, Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. This is somewhat generalized, I suppose, but I would like to see the topic of code enforcement and put on a future agenda item. I think we're starting to get just quite a number of complaints from tenants and businesses, and, and clearly, you know, the, they have plenty of work to do. But it's, I'm just hearing, you know, just too many complaints. And I think it's something that we should be taking a look at.
All right. City Manager Mathias has a comment about that before we see if there's interest.
Yeah, two things. One, if you are getting complaints, then you need to pass them on to us so we can see what those complaints are. Because I've not heard what you're describing, but I'm not saying that's not the case, but we need to know. And secondly, I think the appropriate venue to discuss code enforcement will once again be at the budget retreat, when that will be part of what's considered as of the overall, within the overall budget by the council. Not so much the, necessarily even the monetary dynamic, but the code enforcement operation itself.
Well, I respectfully disagree. This is a, code enforcement has become something that is of vital interest to our businesses, to homeowners, with the cars that need to be...
Councilmember Harris, just because we, we know what you're after, I'm looking to see if we have, I mean, the city manager proposed that, that you wait till the, sir, sir, sir. Sir, please, right? I have the floor. Thank you. This, the city manager proposed that after the city, after we do the budget retreat, if it's not acceptable, then you can make the proposal again. But right now, what we do is we see if three council members are supportive. And I'm looking for, for three others, or two others other than you. Deputy Mayor Buxton?
I, I just have a comment in opposition to that, and the reason why, as the Chair of the Public Safety Committee, I see the work that has gone on just over the last year. Every time something comes up, there's, there's a lot of process going on, there's a lot of brainstorming going on, there is a lot of response, continual response going on in regard to every complaint I've ever heard, there's action. The, the, the chief is, he's inactive, he, he responds to these things, and, and we haven't had enough time even to measure the response of the actions that we are already taking. So, I don't, I, I actually consider code enforcement, or the actions of code enforcement, to be administrative responsibility of our chief and assistant chief. So, I don't really, right now, see that it would be an appropriate thing for the council to discuss.
Thank you, thank you, Deputy Mayor. With that, we just want to see if we have three council members that are interested in this. Do I have three? I, I know Councilmember Harris, is anybody else? Seeing nobody, we'll move on to board and committee reports, and we're going to start with Councilmember Pennington.
Okay, thank you. First, I want to thank the folks that showed up this evening and, and shared and voiced their concerns. There's a lot of passion in the community about a lot of different things, and a lot of what, what they shared is not, is not exclusive to one community. There's a lot of, of things that are happening across the community, there is, and across the region. And, and so, there's a lot of systemic things going on. And a couple of meetings ago, we, we met with the police chief, the Public Safety Committee did. And there's a, to handle a lot of these problems, there's a regional approach that, that is, that has to be taken, and is being taken. And, and it goes down to some of the root causes of, and so, we're seeing different displays of behavior across our community, and, and a lot of those have some root causes that, that, that I know the police department regionally, they're, they're working on. One of the things with the new business item that, that we just approved, the opioid distribution settlement, that, that's another regional approach to help take care of some of these problems. And, but for the folks in Redondo, I hear what you're saying, I understand what you're saying, I have the same thing on Marine View Drive. I get the smell of burnt rubber, I get the loud motorcycles at night, every night about closing time, I get a wake-up call. I get the gunshots, I used to respond to them, now I walk out to the end of my driveway and watch the activity. So, there's a regional, there's, and that isn't exclusive to Des Moines, or it isn't exclusive to one community. And what we can do as a community is we can, you know, continue to try to support the, the reduction of that. We can try to continue to work through our regional partners so that we address some of those, those systemic issues at the root cause. And so, I hear you, I understand what you're saying, I live it too. And I know probably on North Hill, there's issues, they're all over. And so, thank you for the conversation, thank you for, all of you for your comments. It, it doesn't fall on deaf ears. And, and so, we'll continue to move forward through the Public Safety Committee, through the different pieces of, of, of the city that, that all have a part of this, whether it be public safety, code enforcement, so on and so forth, road management. There's all, there, there's more to splitting, putting speed bumps on a road. There's a lot of, lot of things that are involved with, with that. It's not just go out and buy them and pound them in. There's, there's a whole lot of, of guidelines that are, that are established by the national transportation groups. So, it, it's, it's a lot of work, and, and I know that our folks have heard this before. I know we've talked before, Rick, with this, and we try to get some things done. It, it's, we're, we have to be into it for the long haul. I'd like to thank John Blackburn for his years of service. I know John's not here, but for the record, thank him for his years of service. He's, he's done an exemplary job as a, as a member of the city. I'd also like to thank Officers English, Morris, Rico, Hamilton, Ochart, and Dodson for coming to our city. It's a privilege to have them here. It's a privilege to, to see what they're going to do. I, I look forward to it, I look forward to the new generation. I remember when Ochart's dad came on board. And by the way, Officer Hamilton has the same, Hamilton has the same name as the previous officer. And Officer Raymond is a, is a younger version of a retired police officer that we had, almost looks identical. Stick around long enough, everything comes back around. So, anyway, anyway, thanks for everything, thanks to the employees, thanks to the council for what you're doing, and, and city manager. And the ferry boat knocked it out of the park. I'm anxious to, to really see the end results, and, you know, we're just a couple of weeks into it, so I'm, I'm really looking forward to seeing, you know, the rest of that and where it goes. So, I had more to say, but I'm out of time. Thanks.
Councilmember Oxger?
Thank you. I'd just like to comment that with regard to the Redondo situation, but several, several things that we're talking about in the area is that we've been talking about these for a long time. I think I said at the last meeting, twenty-five years since Redondo came in. The, it's, we're getting a lot of, of comment about, oh, yeah, it's a problem, we need to look at it. I think the public wants to know exactly what we're doing. If we're making a proposal, such one of the proposals is to adopt the Idaho law outlawing aftermarket mufflers, we need to tell the people, this is the direction we're going. We need to sit down and be, be open with the public, is this that, this is our plan to deal with this. Because for twenty-five years, it's all been lip service. And so, you know, I think that, that we need to come up real quick, and I'm sure I will be called for being out of order. Possibly at the next meeting, it should be a case of we should put this on the agenda. Let's sit down and actually talk about what the heck we're going to do, what approach we're going to take. Because so far, it hasn't been, it's been twenty-five years of talk, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Oxger. Moving on to Councilmember Nutting?
Thank you, Mayor. The Economic Development Meeting, I chaired, and the municipal, municipal facilities meeting I chaired this evening, we both met. We, in both meetings, we got, committee meetings, we got an update on the ferry service, which you all heard in the municipal facilities meeting. We got an update on the Soundview Park. The, there's a twelve-foot story pole that's being carved by the mucklechutes right now, and we're shooting for basically a grand opening, installation of that by the fall. And then, we heard about the redirection of Fifth. And that's obviously on the docket and being talked about, and we're upping patrols down there and security to help mitigate some of the challenges we're having at the new park. And then, we received an update on the Marina. The summer has been good to the Marina due to the multiple events that the Marina has had, and the Marina staff being a big, big part of that. They've fallen behind in some of their capital projects due to the lack of time and, and the, the amount of time they've been spending with the events down there. So, it's no fault of their own. We discussed the, the, where they're at in the design project. They're at fifty, forty-five percent design for LM and N dock, looking for final in June of 2023, hoping to start waterwork in 2024. They're putting together a PowerPoint presentation that they hope to be going to the tenants with in the next month or so. And then, they received bids for the Redondo floats and some of the RCO grants. And then, I want to remind everybody about the fun stuff. Sunday, the twenty-eighth, this Sunday, from two to four, down at the Marina, on the Marina floor. Again, here we are, taking, having an event down on the Marina floor for Marina staff to deal with, but it, it's, it's good stuff. It's Mount Rainier High School, Ram Fest on the Marina floor. It's kind of been rebranded this time, it's usually just the football team. We're, we're including, or they're including several of the other teams and organizations from the school. It's going to be a good time, it's a free event. So, I encourage everybody that has the opportunity from two to four to join us down in the Des Moines Marina, North End, from two to four this coming Sunday. And then, every year, thousands of children are injured in accidents. Thursday, the first, is, is back to school for the Highline School District, and I bring this up every year. Man, they're, they're kids. Watch out for them, drive the speed limit, as we've been talking about speed limits throughout the night. Just pay attention to your school zones, look out for them, they're enjoying their lives and are not necessarily paying attention all the time. So, drive safe, and those conclude, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Councilmember Nutting. Moving on to Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. So, a couple of weeks ago, I attended the Ultrafine Particulates Advisory Committee, and they are finally showing an interest in making a stop in Des Moines near St. Philomena, part of their regular program. And I have pushed for that because it's in a spot where there are no, basically, there's no road traffic, there's no trucks. And one of the toughest challenges that they have had has been teasing out the difference between roadway emissions and aviation emissions. But there's this ongoing bias towards putting everything having to do with aviation emissions in Sea-Tac and at the north end of the airport because of this thing called flow. Two-thirds of the flights basically go in a particular direction so that the majority of the particulates tend, they think, tend to rain down on Sea-Tac. But my feeling is, is that Ultrafines are a bit like lead, which I recognize from working in the auto industry. There is probably no safe level, and I sure would like Des Moines to get more attention regardless of takeoffs and land... to get more attention regardless of takeoffs and landing percentages, especially with the third runway. And St. Phil is ground zero, as is my house, by the way. Also, I attended the King County Flood Control Advisory Committee, and there is unanimity in moving forward as fast as possible on projects. There's a recognition with inflation now, and every city is at end of life on all kinds of different grid things. And I had the insolence to put forward an idea that the county create a second bite at the apple fund. We seem to have a great number of projects where we start digging and then find out that there's a cost overrun, something that we did not foresee. Either the grid was not mapped correctly in the 50s, or they hit a particular type of soil, and there may be money for getting reimbursed for some of those cost overruns. There will be two listening sessions at Midway Park, September the 9th and September the 23rd, organized by Reach Out Des Moines. They want people in the community who are interested in reducing teen violence, which is their mission, to show up 5:30 September the 9th, September the 23rd, those are Friday evenings. And I just want to say regarding the people who attended the Masonic Home thing, I, I have no comment as to, you know, anything to do with the, you know, the process, except to say that I think the public is quite confused as to what the council's role is. It's, we're not, you know, speaking, we, obviously you don't have an opinion, but I, I think it would have been better if the city's website had given more information on what happens after it's done. And I guess that's the hook. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Moving on to Deputy Mayor Buxton, who had a birthday yesterday, by the way.
Yeah, where's my cane, ma'am? You guys didn't present me with a cane. Well, thank you. So since we last met, I participated in about 20 engagements with colleagues, organizations, and the community, which many of those were my colleagues right here in this dais, including South King Housing and Homelessness Partners, the Farmers Market Board, Soundside Alliance for Economic Development, Southside Chamber, and the Police Department. I discussed, or we discussed, or advocated regarding housing, homelessness, human services, community volunteer opportunities, economic opportunities, domestic violence, public safety, and local and regional policy. I enjoyed our community's richness in art and culture through events such as the Cambodian Festival at Saltwater, which was attended by the mayor and Councilmember Steinmetz, who's not here tonight, music in the park at the Beach Park every Wednesday, also championing essential community nonprofits in our community, such as the Farmers Market in SR3. So here are a few highlights from the last few weeks. Our South King Regional Partnership is moving quickly toward their first disbursement of funds in support of affordable housing. Our Police Department has made some amazing strides toward increasing safety, both on Pacific Highway and in Redondo. Our new fast ferry is the talk of Pike Place Market and is piquing interest in regional, in our regional, regional business community. I would like to welcome from this dais into our business community, Annie McGrath. She is a Normandy Park resident, and she is the new CEO of the Southside Chamber of Commerce, which represents Des Moines, Normandy Park, Burien, Tequilla, and Sea-Tac. In step with honoring National Recovery Month, I'm, I want to just give a shout out. I'm impressed with our Parks and Human Services Advisory Commission. They had an event yesterday, it was an outreach into the community, and invited several organizations that our city supports to come out and, and talk to the community about the kind of services that they offer to our community, that we, that we offer through them. And there was a kids concert, music, and some fun things for families. It was a really great family event, and I sure appreciated all these organizations coming out to interact with our citizens. They, they gave out backpacks, et cetera. So if you have any questions, if anybody has any questions about the items or subjects I mentioned, feel free to write a call. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Buxton, and happy birthday. I, first of all, want to include our other school district in our city, the Federalway School District, they start on September 8th. There's a lot of folks south of 252nd or whatever, to make sure that you also look out. It was actually supposed to be scheduled for September 2nd, and they've moved it back to September 8th. One great note is on October 13th, the Mount Rainier High School and Federalway High School will actually play football against each other, and I invite council to attend that. I think that's a great thing. I, I gotta reiterate what Councilmember Oxger said. We need some help, especially with the folks in Redondo, of contacting your legislators. We need legislation that bans the aftermarket mufflers and the installation and the sales of vehicles that include the switches that do so. Idaho and New York both have laws. To us, you know, we'd love to see that, that would be a big help. And of course, some of the policing policy that was passed over the last couple of years needs to be looked at and maybe swung back some. So we could use some efforts there from, from the public. And we'll continue to, to do what we can for Redondo and, and serve you as best we know how. With that being said, I was on the inaugural ride of the passenger ferry. It was very successful. I have heard nothing but positive feedback. I told Michael that he lied to me, he said it would take 40 minutes, but it only took 28. I've been personally contacted by several restaurants, any conversation and in writing by one, that they were very happy with the passenger ferry, because something we hoped for was increment sales. And they said that their 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM business, which is usually dead, has, has increased and significantly, and they know to get these folks back on the ferries and so forth, and it, it's very positive. I was interviewed, there was a letter of mayors, it was strong mayors in the South King County, that talked about, they wrote a letter of protest about the way crime, courts, et cetera, were, were being handled in South King County. And none of the council, city manager council forms of, of mayors were, were included that. I immediately contacted the, some of the strong mayors, I got our name added to the list, and I did an interview with King Five. Because I want the community to know, and I know the police chief echoes this sentiment, and so does our city manager, we are very concerned about public safety and crime. They, we've had our hands tied, we're a one-legged man in an ass-kicking contest is maybe another way to put it, but we continue to serve this community, and we're conserving it better than other communities surrounding us. I just need, I want to reiterate that. Despite, so, we understand the concerns that the public has, but you have to understand, this is, this a war, and we have a hand, we have our hands tied behind our back in a lot of cases. I also have been attending catalytic converter theft workshops, working on legislation and possible funds that might be recruited, especially for low-income people and charities that have had their catalytic converters stolen. They're the ones, while all of us have had, across the board, have had them stolen. This is a big issue, and somebody in a low income, their car might be worth $4,000, and they get their catalytic converter stolen, and they don't have a car, and they have no means to replace it. It's, but there's some great work, and we hope that that will be in legislation in this next upcoming agenda. With that, I, I also just want to remind people that we have the Blues and Brews on the 27th down at the Beach Park as well, and that's a great community event sponsored by the Rotary Group. I think everybody else has mentioned the other stuff, so I'll leave it alone. And the next meeting will be Thursday, September 8th. It is a study session at 6:00 PM, it's called, it's gonna be our, or 5:00, I'm sorry. I stand corrected, it is at 5:00 PM, and it'll be our budget retreat. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move.
I see Councilmember Pennington?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Nutting. All those in favor? Motion passes six zero. With that, everybody enjoy your weekend and have a safe Labor Day.